Farewell.
I'd like to call at me in your order. This is the two C I P group of seven, the county Board of County Commissioners. Want to welcome everyone here. We're to start tonight with a dedication by Mr. Al.
Would you please bow with me? Great as God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for watching over this county. We pray for all the folk that were affected by this storm, and we pray for those in Florida who will be yet affected again. We ask you blessings above them, and we answer to bless this board of commissioners and the citizens of this county, so that the decision that we make will be in the best interest of all of our citizens. Are we asking in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen.
All right, if you stand for questions, we... Our pledge to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting will open up for a public forum, but we have been...
Yes, sir.
We have no one timed up. Does anyone wish to speak for a three-minute period? See, no one making a mad dash. We'll move on, and I want to let April introduce someone before we do any further.
Okay. I'd like to introduce our new parts and recreation director Lawrence Baker. Mr. Lawrence, if you'll come up for a minute. I'm putting you on the spot just a little bit. But Mr. Lawrence has been with us for less than one week as of today, and he brings to us a lot of experience in city and county parts and recreations over eighteen years, matter of fact. So he's done a lot of things, collegiate athlete, and so we're very glad to have him. And I hope he'll put you on the spot if you want to say anything. We understand if not.
Just wanted to say... All right, just wanted to thank you guys for, first of all, for letting me, uh, choosing me to be here to represent Scotland County. I'm super excited about where we're heading into the direction of sports and athletics, and if anybody has any ideas or any kind of opinions, I will take them all. My door is open. You can call, email, air breaker, and I will respond. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, we're going to move into consent agenda. We have the same issue with I O B E that we had last time. I need to recuse myself out of that one. We didn't do it with my recusal because we didn't have enough last time, but now we have enough to do that with me refusing out of that, so. I O, yeah, there's one of those discoveries is neat.
Move to the...
Appreciate you.
Second.
All right, motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Dorothy, just make sure that that's not stated, that I did not just say that. All right, next is a resolution honoring Dr. Dale McKinnis.
Well, it is my pleasure to come before you tonight, Commissioners, to propose a resolution in honoring Dr. Dale McKinnis. Dr. McKinnis, if you don't mind stepping up here, please. Always, sir.
Thank you. Good, thank you.
When I was considering this, this resolution and looking back over the last number of years, going back thirty or forty years in Scotland County and looking at our representatives and those who have done so well for us, I look at people like Aaron Flower, Richard Conder, Tom McKinnis, even our own Bill Purcell, Doug Young, who are currently going to the areas who've all not just looked after Scotland County, but looked after the region itself and even the state of North Carolina. I'm not sure there's anybody, perhaps, who's done even more for Scotland County than Dr. McKinnis. Dr. McKinnis has been the president of RCC since 2010, and he's been part of the community college system since 1992. He's done a lot of really good things for Scotland County, and most of those are included in this resolution. So I'm at this point going to make the motion to the chair that the board approve a resolution honoring Dr. McKinnis. It's kind of crazy to get up here and propose a resolution to somebody when they haven't voted on it yet, but I've got confidence that they will vote to approve this. This is the resolution Dr. McKinnis would read. Whereas Dr. William Dale McKinnis, President of Richmond Community College, will retire October 31st, 2024, after outstanding service in the community college system beginning in 1992 at Montgomery Community College, and since 2002 serving Richmond Community College in various vice presidential positions until being named the RCC's seventh president in 2010. And whereas he has provided statewide leadership to the North Carolina Community College System and the Systems Presidents Association in areas of executive leadership, performance measures, and various financial areas. And whereas Dr. McKinnis has served Richmond and Scotland Counties as an active member of many civic agencies and boards, including economic and workforce development groups, specifically serving on the Laurinburg-Scotland County Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors from 2010 until 2021, as its chairman in 2020, a unique appointment for a non-resident in Scotland County. And whereas, I want you to know at this point, I want to put in here something saying like, in spite of the fact that he was a native of Richmond County, and in spite of the fact that he believes green and gold, he has been effective and instrumental in the expansion of RCC services as Scotland County residents, and by increasing the staff and facilities in Scotland County in 2019, achieved the multipurpose designation for Richmond Community College into Scotland County. And whereas the efforts of Dr. William Dale McKinnis and his staff have resulted in an increase of our resident enrollment and RCC programs, and that Scotland County residents now compose 31% of the student body, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the Scotland County Board of Commissioners, do hereby resolve that Dr. William Dale McKinnis be honored and recognized for his dedication and service for Richmond Community College and Scotland County. This is set up date of October 2024. Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion to the board.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Al, for any other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you. I'm sorry, do you...
Anyone want to take a picture with you?
If you're willing to speak for a second, if you will.
I'm very grateful, and I appreciate the partnership and all the county's done to support the college and our students. It's been a great time, and I'm, I'm thankful for leaving everything in a good place, but I appreciate this great honor. I enjoy working here. Thank you.
Thanks, Dorothy.
All right, moving on to our next Jane McGee Resolution or Operation Green Light Resolution. There you go.
Hello, my name is Jane McGee. I'm the county's, um, the Scotland County Vision Service Officer. Um, I'm in full-time here for, um, since July 1st. Been here working as a vision service officer, doing visions for September 5th of last year. Um, last year, we made this motion to do Operation Green Light. For those of you who don't know, Operation Green Light is a national collaboration, uh, collaborative to support North Carolina veterans, um, to raise awareness about unique challenges that they face, while studies show that the vast majority of Americans support our veterans too often, that, um, it's not seen or felt by leading men, when, um, Operation Green Light is trying to change that. And the goal of Operation Green Light is to enhance awareness of vision programs and support such as vision services here to provide in Scotland County, and to also remind our veterans that their country and their county stays with them. This is a simple way of just saying thank you, that their service mattered, and that we are grateful for their sacrifices. And the way that we're doing that is the simple green light bulb, swapping it out for the weak, um, and just shining the light to let the veterans know that they're seen, they're heard, and that they matter, that they matter. Um, I'm going to read the resolution for supporting Operation Green Light for our veterans. Um, whereas the residents of Scotland County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in our armed forces, and whereas the contributions of, and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and Scotland County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom before freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and veterans continue to serve, um, our community in the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county vision service officers in twenty-nine states that help fellow former service members across more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies, studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And, excuse me, and whereas, um, active military service, service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for sudden, for suicide, excuse me, during their first year after military service. And I just want to take time here to point out that we've had about, just this past month, we've already had twelve service members that's transitioned out of military who's coming from, um, after deployment in war, and that's something that's kind of high for our county lately. It's the highest number I've seen since I've been here, um, within a month. We've had a lot of transition orders and the process of transition to civilian life. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas Scotland County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Scotland County hereby declared from October through Veterans Day, November 11th, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, therefore be it further resolved in observation of Operation Green Light. Scotland County encourages the citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in windows of their places of business or residence from November 4th to November 11th, 2024. Thank you. And also involve, um, light bulbs for all of the members of the board. Is it passed?
Do we have a motion for that resolution?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next is a National 4-H Week proclamation. Angela Galway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners, and thank you all for the opportunity to speak. As you said, my name is Angela Galway. I'm a senior agent here for youth development of the South Town Cooperative Extension. Um, so this is National 4-H Week, and we are excited. For over one hundred years, 4-H has been shaking lives for programs that focus on leadership, citizenship, and also life skills. Our local 4-H program itself continues to thrive, uh, serving youth from all backgrounds and hands-on experiences in agriculture, science, and community service. This year, we've seen remarkable growth in participation, and our youth have taken part in over a thousand hours of educational interactive experiences that are preparing them for the seats at the table. Looking ahead in 2025, we plan to expand our science, technology, integrative mathematics initiatives, and launch new programs in arts communication and mental health awareness. We also aim to reach older, underserved communities, ensuring every young person in Scotland County has the opportunity to develop the skills that prepare them for the future. With your continued support, we can build on our success of 2024 and create even more opportunities for youth in our community. Thank you all for your time and for championing our youth here. And with that being said, I'll be now two young members who are going to share their 4-H stories, and then I'll come back up and share the proclamation.
Hello, my name is Geneva Erickson. I am eleven years old and I'm a little more hip. I've been at 4-H for six years now. My journey began in South Carolina and continued to Scotland County. I'm a member of the span club. I recently showed goat and chicken at the fair. I wish I could turkey, and we could market turkey show at North Carolina State Fair. This will be my 4-H commercial here. At 4-H, the N C Cooperative Extension is also used at life signs, home egg, life skills, and animal signs at our house since we are homeschool. 4-H provides me with lots of activities, lessons, friendships, and community activities. My brother and I will be hosting the kids' only voting room on November 5th, 2024, to encourage civic engagement among other kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to thank you for sponsoring me going to Youth Voice this past summer. And I'd like to tell you my 4-H story. I joined 4-H and I was five years old in South Carolina. Once I knew that it was all about animals in the outlands, I instantly fell in love with the program. My hobbies are soccer, reading, exploring the woods, and mechanics. My name is Gaye Erickson. I'm a fourteen-year-old intermediate 4-H student. I have a number five of six kids. I have one little sister, one older brother, and three older sisters. I'm homeschooled, and I was born in New York, South Carolina, where I lived, where I lived until I was eleven years old. In July of 2021, my family and I moved here to Laurel Hill, North Carolina, where I continue to be very active in 4-H. In North Carolina 4-H, I am currently participating in the Planet Special Interest Club and Homeschool 4-H Rockets Club. I have attended the South Central District Activity Day. 4-H, I have attended these, excuse me, South Central Districts, excuse me. I have attended the South Central District Activity Day, 4-H State Congress, 4-H Electric Congress, Youth Voice, Betsy Jeffin for three years now, 4-H Camp No Stone for one year. In South Carolina, I did the Food Pot Project, the Pollinator Garden Project, the Rabbit Project, the Tomato Project, the Rabbit Project, the Small Garden Project, the Junior Beekeeper Project, the Poultry Project, Dairy Goat Exhibition Show, Dairy Goat Club, Robotics Club, the Golden Egg Embryology Contest, and I've been with 4-H back to back science activity kits. I took part in 4-H Camp, 4-H Camp in Somerville, South Carolina, and Okanagan Camp in Chester State Park in Chester, South Carolina. I have also done the 2024 Regional Chicken Project. My goals are to show cows and also goats through 4-H into wind-riddens and cattle ponchos doing so. In the future, I plan to become an agricultural mechanic and work on tractors and farm equipment. Furthermore, I hope to become an accomplished hunter orphan by hunting and fishing in my spare time. The people who helped me are my parents, my 4-H agent, my club leaders, and my club leadership. My parents helped me by transporting me to activities and being there for assistance when I had questions. My 4-H agent provides me with resources and support for all my 4-H endeavors. Also, my club leaders offer encouragement and give constructive criticism to educate me through 4-H. 4-H has challenged me to dive in, explore different animals and subjects because I'm hungry. 4-H has shaped my cur-, 4-H has shaped my curriculum. The majority of my life has been influenced by 4-H, and I am proud of that fact. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Geneva, we also have Saria here as well. She's another member of our 4-H span club. And her mother, also Ms. Engie, and Kim's are asked them to come up right now. These are two of our club leaders of our span club and some of our members. We have about fifteen, sometimes twenty-five participants. So as they come up behind me, I'm going to read the proclamation for National 4-H Week. Where 4-H is America's largest youth development organization empowering nearly six million young people across the country with vital skills and promote leadership, responsibility, community engagement, and whereas 4-H as part of North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of North Carolina A&amp;T State University and North Carolina State University, provides youth with hands-on experiences in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, helping living, leadership, and citizenship development. And whereas 4-H has connected youth and their communities with innovative research and resources from our nation's 112 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 122 years, playing a vital role in shaping the future leaders of tomorrow. And whereas 4-H empowers young people in Scotland County to acquire knowledge, develop critical life skills, contribute to solving community problems, and cultivate attitudes that help and them become self-directed, productive, engaged citizens in our country, in our county, and beyond. And whereas the program has more than 260,000 participants statewide, representing urban, suburban, and rural areas, including the youth of Scotland County who come from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, reflect the rich diversity and strength of our community. And whereas in Scotland County alone, hundreds of youth have benefited from 4-H programming, learning practical skills, building confidence, and developing leadership abilities that will serve them throughout their lives. And whereas 4-H could not have achieved such remarkable success without support of over 13,000 adult volunteers across North Carolina, including many dedicated individuals from Scotland County, who have generously given their time, energy, and expertise to mentor and guide the youth of our community, and now therefore be proclaimed by the Scotland County Board of County Commissioners. And I'll let you finish the rest of it, Mr. I.
That's all right. She's fucking good. That's all right.
By the Scotland County Board of County Commissioners that October 6th through 12th, 2024, be proclaimed as National 4-H Week in Scotland County. I encourage the citizens of Scotland County to learn more about this outstanding program, to recognize its impact on the future of our young people, and to support the continued partnership between Scotland County 4-H Youth Development and our state's university system. Proclaim the seventh day of October, 2024.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mom.
Don't go anywhere.
Some of the...
There's a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, um, you want to do it?
I'd like...
Yeah. And for those, these resolutions, I'll sign your, if you'll have a player, but I think they're going to frame. All right, moving on to our next item. Seth Hatch from Air Force Sky High Aerospace Presentation, and Trey Brown. Is Trey here, too?
Yes, sir. Good evening, County Commissioner, County Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Since, hard to believe, it's been about a year since the last time I came. I try to come at least once a year and talk a little bit about the airport. I know we're on the cusp of Scotland County and about twelve miles away from Laurinburg, so it's easy to get lost in translation sometimes, but it's always good to keep communication on how things are at the airport. So today, I want to talk a little bit about some of the really exciting things that we have going on. I think last year, we talked a little bit about some of the projects, one of those being a fuel farm. We actually just broke ground on our new fuel farm about four weeks ago. This is exciting. This is exciting because we've been trying to work on a new fuel farm for about twenty years now. So we're excited to see that happen at the airport. Now you say, what's that going to do for us? Well, that's going to basically double our current fuel capacity and allows us to sell fuel cheaper at the airport. But what does that do? Well, it allows us to stay competitive with other local airports and bring people who might not traditionally fly into Scotland County into Scotland County. And so what we like to do is, even though we're enrolled in North Carolina, we give them first-class customer service. So they fly in for the sheet gas and they come back for the customer service that we offer them. In fact, I've got our new operations manager, Marcus Baker, with us here. He actually came from New York, I wanted to be against him, but from New York. He came from the private sector of what's called a fixed base operation, which is the fuel cells and the hangar management side of the business. And he's been huge in helping us change that perspective. I think I talked last year a little bit about how we give out free ice cream sandwiches. So ice cream sandwiches, well, once again, giving people a reason to come to Scotland County. But this year, we actually, we grew our personnel. We actually hired a customer service representative. So then we have one person solely dedicated to the customer service experience at Laurinburg-Maxon. So as soon as somebody lands at Laurinburg-Maxon Airport, we do, and we greet them in a golf cart. We lay out privately, it's not the red carpet, it's the blue carpet with our logo on it. They get off and take them a cold bottle of water, some ice cream, and our customer service representative is able to help them to their car and get them squared away. So we're really excited about that. On top of all these other exciting things and getting to barbecue tonight, we've been trying to do more events at the airport. So we had our first flying back in May of this year. And I'm not sure, but a few of you may have been able to attend it. What a flying is, it really gives pilots an excuse to fly somewhere with their friends, maybe somewhere they go often, maybe somewhere they've been a couple times, or maybe somewhere they go all the time. And it gave them an excuse to come to Laurinburg-Maxon Airport, get some cheap fuel, see the bone yard, which is what Charlotte aircraft and Leo airplanes out there. But more importantly, they get to know us, get to know Scotland County, get to know our staff. We were blown away by the response. We were spent about fifty to sixty people. I think we had about two hundred and fifty people. We had about fifty unique aircraft that flew in. So once again, if they're flying in, they're not from Scotland County. We don't know necessarily where they came from, but we were really excited to have them showcase our facility. But on top of that, we're looking to do something, a couple of things even more exciting. In November, you may have already heard about this, but we've actually partnered with Scotland County Parks and Recreation. And we're going to do an outdoor movie night at the airport. So I've actually got some flyers I'll pass out, but we're going to be showing Top Gun Maverick at the airport. Now, what a cool place to see Top Gun than at the airport. So we're really excited about that. It's Saturday, November sixteenth, the gates open at five o'clock. And of course, it won't be dark till about six-thirty, but we're going to have inflatables for the kids. We're going to have face paint. The event will be free. We'll also have some food trucks there as well. So we're really marketing it as a family movie night at the airport. We've been wanting to do community nights at the airport for years now, and we just haven't done it. And so I think we're excited about the future. And really, that all brings us to why we're here tonight. And Mr. Trey Brown is, we're really excited about our first airshow in decades. And so that'll be next year. I don't want to take away from Mr. Brown's presentation, but Mr. Trey Brown is the president, founder of Sky High Aerospace Expo. So I'll let him do his piece.
Let me ask you a question before you just.
Absolutely.
Just FYI, I heard that you had a reduction in fuel for people going for relief efforts in the western part of the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that is true.
Well, we did. So we wanted to help out as best as we could. Now, there are some challenges because we're so far away from the relief efforts in the west. But what we did is, basically, we're selling our abgas at costs for anyone who is going to help out in relief efforts. We also decreased our margin on jet fuel as well, just instead of, hey, if you're flying over there, if you're taking supplies flying here and you'll get fuel as cheap as you can get anywhere in the state. But we were also fortunate, where Marcus Baker, our operations manager, last Wednesday, there were airports, of course, in distress as well. And of course, all these people flying supplies, they've got to go to an airport near where it's happening. So Marcus went last Wednesday to support the Rutherford County Airport. Marcus, you were up there for about all day.
Yeah.
Last Wednesday. So just for perspective, they only have one airport manager and two linemen. And they've been going for, by the time Marcus got up there, four days straight, they hadn't left the airport. They were intaking about forty aircraft an hour, which, that airport is a very small rural airport. It's maybe, I don't want to say forty aircraft a month, but it is a huge room. Of course, they weren't able to do that. But Marcus has pictures, and maybe I can share them with you after the meeting, of just the community that came out and helped unload them. And they had a system going. It was really cool to see. We were so fortunate to be a part of our lead line service technician, Mr. Albert Lee. He went out there to the San airport on Friday, and he was able to spend all day in some parks on Saturday helping out as well. So we weren't able to necessarily send a monetary donation, but we were able to get a discount on fuel and send some manpower to help our friends out to the west. So every little bit counts. We like to say little things become big things at the airport.
Yep. Thank you.
Of course. Thank y'all. Appreciate you, man.
All right, guys. So commissioners, I'm sure you've seen my gigantic packet there, all my slides. I'm going to go through the whole thing. We'll give you kind of an overview of what we're looking to do and just build a little bit of excitement. Hopefully, we get some questions from you guys. We're going to be able to serve this probably twenty times at this point. So next year, we're looking to bring one of the largest airshows to this part of the state. Every year, about twelve million people visit airshows on average. The economic impact is incredible, depending on where they're at, what they're doing, and the types of events that they're bringing in. So what we're looking to do is bring out what we call an Aviation Expo. This is going to include a full-size, multi-day airshow, along with a flying to support our general aviation community, as well as the business aviation side, that they can come out, folks that do aircraft maintenance, sell parts and things like that, come out and promote their business as well. It's a multifaceted event. Now, what this does, this brings a lot of folks into your community that never would have been here, you know, the otherwise had they not gone into it. As Seth mentioned, the whole ice cream thing is how I found this place. I originally had this thing built and was going to go somewhere else, and it ended up falling through. And I just happened to fly through and got the ice cream sandwich, and here we are. It's been incredible. Their customer service is unlike any other. Some of the things that we're looking to incorporate here, the ones I really want to hit on, the first thing is going to be our STEM program on a Friday. So our dates are a Saturday and Sunday. Technically, it's a two-day event, right? So on the flyer there, we'll see September sixth and seventh. September fifth is Friday. That's the day that we deem rehearsal day. That's where all of my performers have to go up and fly, make sure that they're safe, and everybody knows what's going on. But what is also going to happen is I'm hoping to get with the Board of Education to have all the kids bussed in as a field trip on Friday and let them crawl all over the airport and all of my static displays and things that are going on, that they're not going to get to do on Saturday and Sunday when the general public comes in. You know, some prime examples of that, I've got the military bringing the AC-17 in. It's a gigantic aircraft, and the kids are going to get to crawl all through, like jump, press buttons, do all kinds of stuff, as well as the personnel being there explaining what all these different decks can do. The program continues to grow by the day. I've got a very, very good program director, and he's excited about it. He's also one of our performers as well, and lots more to come. All right, outside of that, the flying community. So Seth talked a little bit about flying that we did earlier this year. We expected about twenty airplanes. We ended up with over a hundred, if I'm not mistaken, just for the fact that you put the work flying and boot and pilots come, they just scatter. All right, so what we're doing at our venue is actually allowing what we call overnight camping, allowing you to camp under the wing of your aircraft. Huge, we saw it out there by pilots. There's only a few locations in the country that do it. Sun and Fun in Oshkosh are most notable. And we're looking to kind of tail right behind them and do that exact same thing. Now, with all this being said, you guys don't know me yet. A little bit of history on myself, so I'm a military veteran. So also, thank you, Operation Grim Life, where you went. Thank you for that very, very much. I'm a military veteran as well. I spent ten years in public safety, law enforcement, fire, EMS, doing those kinds of things. I'm also a Bill Redd pilot, so if you name it, I've probably flown it at least once. So I bring a lot of different expertise and a lot of different knowledge to this particular realm. When it comes to the airshows, I'm also an air boss for the FAA. So I've got a little bit of experience here, and I'm also bringing in a team that has done this stuff with me throughout the country. So when we come in, we're going to be looking to train the community, and our volunteers are going to be what is needed. We can't do it without them. So my wife is going to be the one that heads up our volunteer organization. And when we start putting that stuff out, the folks that I bring in are going to train you guys how to do this stuff, because most of the folks in this community have never done this kind of thing before. So we're going to make sure that this is a growing item that the community can be excited about when it comes around, and, you know, we can all benefit from it. That's kind of a high-level overview. Hoping you guys have some questions. I don't want to ramble.
Would the Golden Mike be involved in that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. They would. Golden Mike's very, very excited. They will do multiple performances with us. And I'll go over a couple more performances, kind of build you up a little bit. Questions?
And I've heard Seth talk about this before, and I think you've covered it, but you talk faster than I can list. I'll sort that.
I apologize.
This is kind of a unique thing. I think it's, I think Oshkosh is one place that's happened, and I think in Florida. This is not something that happens everywhere.
No, sir. This, this style of event does not, there's only two other ones in the country like it, and it is Oshkosh and Sun and Fun in Florida, which both, I work at both of those. And I've kind of taken some of their goods and donuts from that to build this one. You know, airshows everywhere.
How will this be similar to those? How will this be different than those?
So the similarities will be, of course, our, our multi-day, right? It'll be our DA flying, our airshow, the Aviation Expo side. That is the uncommon piece to it all, right? Most of these other folks, right? Because North Carolina is a huge military state. We're used to having airshows in Seymour Johnson, Cherry Point. But they don't include, they don't let pilots fly into the military, you know, bases for obvious reasons. So this is, it's a little bit different. And the similarities to it is structured in the exact same way. But what I'm doing that they're doing differently is, well, first of all, Oshkosh is a five to seven-day event. I'm not going that large right now. It's, it's a lot to manage, and right now, it's me and a very small team at the moment. A lot of the things that they have issues with, I hear from our pilots, is throughout the day. And this is something that you'll come to learn if you understand this event, is the airshow typically, you know, a typical airshow takes place in the middle of the day. Well, what that does, that locks my airspace down, and none of the regular pilots can fly in or around it. So what we're doing differently is we're going to actually start our airshow late in the evening on Saturday, and it's going to run into a complete night show, ending with fireworks and a wall of fire and a whole bunch of other things. But what that does, that keeps my airspace open all day for folks to fly in and out. It's like, please come and visit, and also for rides, there's going to be a lot of different rides. We need helicopters, P-51 Mustang, Wilbur type stuff, all kinds of things. I feel a little excited.
Is it September fifth, or sixth and seventh?
Yes, sir. September sixth and seventh of next year. All the official marketing will drop January first, New Year's Day.
I'm pretty sure you and Seth have already looked at some of the operations pieces, parking.
Yes, sir.
I heard you mention something about tents, one of the ones we should get with the sheriff department on.
Yes, sir. So you actually briefly just noticed, we've had a couple of logistics meetings already with the local safety agencies. They are fully involved and fully supportive of what we're trying to accomplish. A lot of the logistical issues that we would run into difficult, we have already got ironed out. We had it ironed out a year and a half ahead of time. I'm not, as Seth told you, I'm not someone who has to do things last minute.
Well, since I say that, you have the Griffin group that's out there.
Right, absolutely. Right. And that's what we're doing, is working to create a relationship all the way around that. There's going to be different pieces that play into that. And, yeah, we're absolutely working with everybody. This is not a trade thing or a Sky High thing.
I assume you're trying to get people to come to the show from a spectator standpoint, from an area larger than just Scotland County?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so our marketing is going to expand the entire East Coast. So right now, our anticipation numbers are ten thousand people, of course, two days.
Right.
And right now, luckily, with the size of the airport, for those that don't know, they got about forty-three hundred acres in this place. And where we're trying to house our particular event, I have plenty of room for that many people.
Parking?
Parking, yes, sir.
Is that a comparable area to where you go in Florida and Oshkosh?
So our acreage, as far as size goes, is the same as Oshkosh. It's just not developed, of course. And that's why, it's one of the reasons that I like this place, is it allows us to grow and make this thing bigger. And we won't run out of room.
I'm kind of very excited talking about it, especially if you're doing something bad.
I've been trying to get out here. It's been a rough few, few months.
Well, I think Seth has been pushing for it too, so.
It'll be a tough one with those few members.
It's going to be, it's going to be very exciting. Obviously, you know, the airshow for the city community, that's the biggest thing for them. You know, I'll put a couple of things out there. Our headliner for this year is going to be Toror, Toror, Toror. And what they do is they bring out eight Japanese Zeros, or similar aircraft, and they put on an incredible Pearl Harbor reenactment. And there's a, there's a ton of pyrotechnics, fire, bombs, and all that kind of stuff that go off on the field. And this is all fully licensed and supported. And then we're going to have a jet truck, which seems to be the most exciting thing about an airshow. It doesn't leave the ground, but they love it. There'll be a jet truck racing airplanes, doing all kinds of stuff. Yeah. I don't want to give away all the goodies, but it's going to be an incredible show, especially for a first-year show. I'm doing a lot of things that you just don't see. So.
What the hell are you doing?
Absolutely. This is my life. I love this. Aviation is my world, so. Can I answer any other questions?
Don't disappoint us.
Yeah. I'm trying not to disappoint myself. Don't go there. It's not, it's not going to be easy, but it's going to be worth it.
Thank you for with.
Thank you. Absolutely. I would like to say for the record, it's been a while since I flew into that airport, but I have been out there several times recently. I haven't gotten ice cream yet.
You got a flower going there.
I'm going it out there.
You don't have cheap fuel. I don't buy it here, but I do either. Hey, eat walking, man.
We'll change that.
We'll throw that out there.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, move right on. Jim Pray, DSS Director, SCAT Administrator Grant Approval.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to come before you today. Scotland County Area Transit System likes to approve for the, this will be year 2026, Section Fifty-three Eleven Administrative Grant in the total amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, with a twenty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-dollar local share of fifteen percent, and a combined capital, be able to have a grant in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, with a thirteen thousand, three hundred dollar local share of ten percent. The community total funding request of three hundred eight thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, with a total local share of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty dollars. The community transportation program provides assistance to coordinate existing transportation programs operating within Scotland County, as well as providing transportation options and services for the communities within the service area. These services are currently provided using LTVs as well as Vans. Services are rendered by Scotland County Area Transit System. So we are asking your consideration of approving the fiscal year 2026 administrative and combined capital grants.
Okay. With that, we will need to open up a public hearing for this. If I'm correct. And so now we'll open the floor for a public hearing for anyone to speak for or against this grant opponent. Okay? So any hearing, none, we'll close that public hearing, and we'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I will, I will make the motion to approve the grant, please.
Okay, let's take it.
Motion in, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
And now we'll move on to Mr. Brooke McQueen, on a resounding public hearing, which you should have printed at your desk. And I'll tell you what, I'll go ahead and open that public hearing for that. We'll open the public hearing for this request from Daniel O'Donnell. And you can go ahead and tell us what you got. Go ahead, what you want to say.
So I have Mr. Daniel O'Donnell, who is proposing to regrow approximately two acres out of a twenty-four acre parcel from open space to residential agriculture to build a home for his family. It's located at three twenty-six hundred Slade Circle, Wager of North Carolina. And he is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, there is a map attached on. I'd like to take a look at it before we get into that, we'll just ask if there's anyone here to speak against this rezoning request. Any public hearings, seeing a hearing done, we'll close the public hearing for that, and then open it up for discussion. Um, as I was saying, there is a map in there of where that is. And you know, to be honest with you, I don't know exactly where that is, but it appears to be very rural.
This is about a mile and a half before you get to the One River, Scotland County County Line. It's adjacent to Kamikawa, the wildlife land.
You've had enough, uh, several other applications for that area, and just for process and what the reason enough that they can do. What is the designation for open space?
It is, we, we set things as to open space so that there is not a lot of, um, houses built, things put there, companies, they're, they just like it to be open space.
Our playgrounds listed as open space, so anything that's not residential or construction or farming.
I guess, is there a lot of areas in Scotland County that designate open, open space?
We got an acreage, if you're really interested.
No, I'm, I'm, I did my acreage, I just didn't know that was a designation.
Well, if I look at this right, it, it appears on this map, and it's hard for me to see it, but it looks like there is a house next door, or on the lot next door, it's not right beside it, but, okay, so it's not out of the ordinary, it's just for that area.
And the current homeowner of the home that's there, she had bought this parcel thinking she could build another house herself later, and that is what he's trying to do inside that from her.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, Jason would have decided, wouldn't compare to that.
Nobody here is speaking against it. Open that up.
Did you say Mr. Mr. O'Donnell was here?
Yes.
Go ahead, everybody.
I'm sorry, I came here late.
All right, any other discussion, any questions? Well, motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to the next item, which is our zoning ordinance revision public hearing, you also have in your package. All right, so. Again, we will open that public hearing up for this matter, and then we'll ask Mr. McMillan to tell us what we got going here. Ready?
Yep.
Okay. Um, technically, uh, on your document, uh, may I go back a little page? I think it's listed as a zoning ordinance revision. Uh, the technical term that we presented to the zoning board was a text amendment, not a zoning board revision. And maybe a matter of semantics, but it was presented to the planning zoning board as a text amendment. Also, the, uh, language that you say there was not the language that was presented to the zoning board and approved. This was a language that our county manager had suggested to me, and was my, uh, request and my suggestion that went before the zoning board, and has not gone before the zoning board yet. We are obviously an advisory board, um, and I will leave that, my comments to you to discuss, because what is there has not gone before the board yet, and has not been through, I think, our senior.
I don't, I guarantee you to vote on it tonight anyway, because there's some stuff I know, I want to see it too, but.
I would like for you to see what we did vote on.
What they voted on is the, um, where it starts at completion, but, um, I'm sorry. What's, um. They're, part of their text is in here, and we thought we also needed to give a little bit of process in there as well, so as somebody was reading the ordinance, they would know what to fill out, who to give it to. So, Mr. McMillan is right, they started it, and I feel like we need to expand it, but it still needs to go back to your board to review as well.
Well, not on this.
Not on this, but I mean, give some money.
I think the main idea is to, uh, I think, Mr. McMillan, correct me, but I think their main prize was to do something in the nature of an application that might be useful, so that, um, someone who wanted to go to the cemetery process would not have to delay it for 16 days or so to come through the process of having the, the zoning board here and then place that edition process before this board has a publication, but.
An actual document that came before the board does also note the, uh, family cemetery requirements, so that the paperwork that would go to the, uh, party that requested the waiver, uh, it would also, uh, they would have that specific information. It also has a signature of the applicant, the waiver, and the applicant for the family cemetery. It has a signature of the zoning administrator, the, uh, inspector, the zoning inspector, and I can't remember who else.
Surveyor.
Uh, surveyor, and a funeral.
Andrew, you go over back there again.
Yeah.
Um, well, before we begin, we need more discussion about it. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this, or need to speak on it for or against? Yes, sir?
I'm for it, because my family's born, went through it.
Come on up. You need to state your name and address.
My name's Jamie, and I, uh, I live at 2520 Skipper Road, all of you. Um, probably gonna be a little awkward when we speak, but I'm doing my best. Um, so my dad died September 1st, and we've been waiting to go on the process, but we had the service, and then now we gotta go through it twice, and I don't think it's fair to any family, not just my, I think this is a good idea to kind of help speed up the grieving process for other families.
Um, and we're gonna have another hearing on that in just a minute, so this is just on the ordinance change. Thank you. You may want to come back in just a minute, so I'll go on. Um, without it seeing anyone else, I will close the public hearing on this at this time. My questions on it were, um, do, do we, this is maybe more of an head question, do we need to list under that 11.22.5 what the, what the fine penalty is, ignore all that process? I, I know it says that in that, in that attach with everybody's signs, but it doesn't give us what that penalty of is.
I'll be glad to do some research on, um, if there's some recent legislation that affects in some ways limits what you're able to do with regard to these special use permits and zoning, or I'll be back, present that to the zoning board when it needs, and then we'll come back to this board.
Yeah, it, it currently just reads penalties for failure to complete the ordinance requirements may be, may include double permit fees, fines, and penalties. And, and, I don't, uh, I guess, I guess my question is, is that defined? Should it be defined, or is it defined somewhere else?
I'm not sure that's in the actual ordinance.
That's, and it's not in the ordinance, but it's in that.
There have been fine questions about the fines, like, um, several circumstances.
I'm not sure that one was contained that actually.
But it's in this request of temporary waiver.
Yeah, that's what the final line stood.
Right. But I guess we should probably put it in there, in the ordinance, what that fine or whatever it is. Right.
There's many places that has, so there's so many things that I want you to do with this, like, you know.
In the part where we talk about a fine, can we have that language in such a way that it may be a fine?
Well, it's gonna be a civil penalty and not a fine anyway, if we can do it. But crimes are cured according to the Board of Education, I think historically, we do set penalties.
But the reason I'm saying this is because even though folk may make them as fair as they come, I just would like to see, you know, a penalty that includes money and put them out of further hardship when people are going through a long struggle.
Right.
I just wanna stay out of that, do my stuff.
Yeah, my concern is, and, yeah, dangerous person, I'm not, I'm totally against you. And then we pay, we got, we got to figure out a way to action about it.
Process. And he, he brought up a very valid point. He agreed quietly, you know? Part of him is laying that person to rest. We got, we got to figure out how the heck you like it.
And that, without the zoning board's exact thought, is that we've had this situation, we haven't had a family cemetery for years, and then I think we've had, this is the fourth one in the last.
Third or the last.
So it's, it's absolutely necessary that we find some way to help the grieving parties, and we feel like that this was a real adequate means to do so.
All right, thank you.
So can I get some clarification, and I, I think, uh, Ms. Wilk needs it. So I, I realize the zoning board is gonna review the language, Mr. Johnson is gonna review potential civil penalties, but are commissioners, let's say this happened again tomorrow to another family, are we at a place that we could use this temporary waiver, or are we still holding off on that until the zoning board has a look at this language?
So they can, if one actually passes, then they probably can't get it. Could we do it very possible, and be a matter of three, they're talking about America, like, the idea of coming up with?
He was already buried. He was already buried when they filed it. Well, that, that's what this is for, is to try to stop where if somebody can go in and fill this out, say, look, I'm gonna put it, and as long as it meets all the regular requirements, it's an expedited version of doing it, but then there'll be a, if, if for some reason, 60 days, and I don't want a magic number, is down the road, they haven't followed the other parts of the ordinance, you know, that says has to be done, then there'd be civil penalties for placed on it. Uh, so, but it's a way to expedite it, because we've run into this now three, four times here recently.
Let me ask you a question, this one for Mr. Johnson. Uh, the waiver is presented here, is it not so that it may be voted on and approved as it stands with the authority?
Does that contain the language about the penalties?
It doesn't say, double fines or whatever. It says double permit fees, fines, and penalties. Impossible exhumation.
Yes, it does.
It, it doesn't define what the civil penalties would be, but links that.
That, that's my thing, is it doesn't define what the penalty is.
Right.
Because if we can't just put something on it, new, state law, so you can't do that.
Well, this is a certain thing we've had in the past, uh, St. Crostens at Elmore with the manufactured homes.
Right.
And I started pulling in, Mr. Alford, you made a point about penalties that night, about not having penalties in place, and you were adamant that we had penalties in place. So, um. We, we currently have, uh, items in the ordinances that if something happens, we do not have a penalty schedule set in place for that, that issue.
I think that's the only thing about, I think he needs, he'll get in there and clean that up, some following the state law part of it, and then, then the next time we can hopefully get up. Well, I, there's part of this, what he's asking of the board is, is part of this, it says, you know, double permits, fines, and penalties, which are something defined, and then possible exhumation. Is that something the board wants left in there, or take that out of that, maybe, the board can do with the body, so.
Well, I, I don't, I don't like leaving it open in it with possible double penalties, double fines, and exhumation is one of the consequences, but I think that the intent of this board earlier was putting a process in place that when, if something happened like had happened a couple of months ago, that there was a, a, a way in which the Inspections Department, I'm saying that as a long entity, could make a determination that, that the application and the intent of all the parties was to do those things, and that, that they had to comply with a lot of what was in the statute for a family cemetery before they would be given that temporary waiver. But then, once they had done that, that a temporary permission here forward would be granted. And is that what you're saying?
The thing I'm saying is, St. Crostens, uh, I come to the zoning department, my father passed away yesterday, and I come here, I want a family cemetery. By law, it'll take a minimum of, probably three weeks, I mean, to be able to complete the requirements for a family cemetery. And what this does is allow grieving parties to sign the waiver, understanding that they are getting a waiver to complete the process, and they can go ahead and have the service prior to completing all of the said requirements.
I think that was our intent, was for them to be able to go forward and do it.
Yes.
So, so what is the drawback for us to approve that tonight? Thank you, David.
It was a zoning problem.
Was it advertised, the language you're talking about? As you said, it wasn't, was it advertised?
It was not in the agenda factor that I got, and it was noted as a attachment, but I didn't, I was sitting on my agenda.
He's asking what was advertised. You're asking what was advertised, how was the package applied?
Yeah, what's, what's this advertised? The language.
The language was not, uh.
Could we put the, always on the, here on, better do that. You seem to mean that.
We can, they, they were supposed to follow the guidelines, and, and barrier.
Shouldn't not that responsibility be on the undertake, the folks that are doing the barrier?
Well, they have to sign this one, but.
We don't, we don't make them to a shit decision. We're not on the table.
But I guess about it.
We don't, we merit. We should merit this. Same way.
Can we approve the temporary waiver now without the language?
Working. If you delete the portions that you said you didn't want in there, something probably.
But then we'll still have to go make revisions when I could.
You get it, all right. I mean, in essence, you're looking at the next three, four weeks to get that. And I think that's what I'm suggesting.
Because in worst case scenario, it would be this time next month when we had the final.
So then what happens when somebody comes to our?
That's what, that's what he's talking about.
And let, let me just know that there are penalty ambiguities in the ordinances as they stand in the map. So this would not be, uh, something out of the ordinary to have some ambiguity about the permits in this. It would be comparable to the ordinances in other areas. So just my, my comment about it.
Mr. McMillan, does this proposed language have any major difference in the language provided by your board?
Well, that, that was not something that was presented to the board. Uh, Mr. Lee presented that to me in the last week or so, so that has not had a chance to go to the board yet.
What was presented?
No, my question is, how different is this than what you all approved?
I don't think it's a big, uh, difference in it, right? It was just a language.
No, what they approved said, um, uh, temporary provider, provided, he said, need for service to the family who wishes to be very loved one at home, so completion of all ordinances is still required. So almost the second half is what they approved that is only being. And I, the, the, the very first few sentences, I thought we needed to add some clarification from the process. So.
In the meantime, we're holding up the pen for another 30 minutes.
No, no. Well, if somebody knew, we're coming in, yes, but we have one here tonight that's gonna be settled here in a few minutes.
I think what I see here is, if you approve that, then the form is negligible as far as it could be approved. This will just be something that's procedural, that, that's the procedure. That, that's the procedural, and Rook will have the form in office. But as we voted it, we voted this as a tax amendment to the ordinances. And I, I don't know, how do you want to handle that?
I guess my question is, how do you waive, waive a ordinance requirement? How do you, and this is just for the temporary thing, right? You know, but how would you waive it and it's not in our ordinance? Without adding this right onto our ordinance?
Well, I thought you were considering doing the temporary waiver with some deletions tonight, but...
This part, yes, but then, but it's still not written in our ordinance.
Well, it wouldn't really pass that.
Yeah.
Deleting the exhumation and the penalties.
Well, I do want to comment about the way that that's laid out. We did not have that laid out in a numerical sub-paragraph format in which it could be applied after the family cemetery ordinances that are in our ordinance. So technically, we would need to go back and we would need to put the numeric paragraphs in there that would meet our ordinance standard.
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't match what's in our ordinance.
We'd have to go back to a cemetery.
Well, in order to accomplish what you're trying to do with this next thirty day period, if this board passes the concept of format, these, you know, the penalties and exhumation, your board could then, at its October meeting, do the correction as far as the numerical displacement. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
And, and I would hope that your board would not... If we, if we were to take that action, would your board feel like we have overstepped what we, what we're expecting them to do? We're not trying to do anything to supplant what they should do. We just...
We're strictly advisory, and we did advise, but you as the county commissioner obviously have the ability to overrule anything we do. And if it hurts our feelings, that's just too bad on us.
Well, well, and I'm not opposed to doing that. But that would not be my intention. But I do think that this is something that this board thought needed to occur. And rather than postponing it for another thirty days, I would be in favor of moving forward with being able to, to the temporary waiver grant and to move forward with that. And I, I don't, I mean, that's, I don't want to do that, and if there are things left open that are, would be controversial. I mean, when you start talking about exhumation or, or monetary penalties, that's, that's not something that we would take lightly. But I think that most folks, the, the situations that I'm aware of, the families would have been more than willing to agree to do everything that was required for a family cemetery. They didn't want to have to take a month to get it done.
Right.
And so if you added in temporary waiver, put them to accomplishment, I've got confidence that they would move forward with that.
Right, but my only, and I don't basically give a word of that. My only question is, since it's not written into our ordinance, would there be a problem?
Well, if you pass this waiver, and wherever it is, with the deletion of the exhumation penalties, I mean, that's blessed tonight, I mean, and they can determine what...
But we still need to come back later and do a ordinance revision.
Well, this would say ordinance revisions without a office, replacing them.
Right. But I mean, it wouldn't be in our ordinance.
We'll be actively fast, we'll hold that.
And Ms. Rook, let me mention that you do have an alternative. Since Miss Lee has placed this in and it was advertised, use that language.
Where I advised it, um, because I think that's what we've been talking about a little bit now. Family cemetery starts at eleven point twenty-two point four. It, it naturally fit right behind family cemeteries as family cemetery temporary waiver, eleven twenty-two point five. That was the natural fit in the ordinance. Um, I think now we're starting to talk about placement in addition to like...
But was the language, there was, the language was in average.
This language...
That language was. The ads have been performed, but again, we're strictly advisory.
No, 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 I'm talking about the average. What language has been average?
That.
That was average, I suppose.
That's it.
She's saying...
No, 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 we're going to do the, uh...
Okay, so no, no, that's my mistake. I thought it was, the general was advertised.
Eleven twenty-two four, I think.
Eleven twenty-two four were your original ordinance. So I think, um...
So just reading, you know, this...
I was, I was trying to summarize options for you all. I think, I don't know, it's not placing...
Worst case scenario here, all we're doing is, is, is cutting down a thirty day period. Because the first of November, it's going to be worked, it's going to be all corrected anyway, right?
Right. So does the language have to be advertised, Mr. Attorney?
I believe this, well, what did you advertise?
There would just be a text amendment, if there was some verbiage.
Okay.
So, I don't know. I mean, we're just going to have to wait thirty days and get it all cleaned up from now on. But this gives us the direction.
So advertising a text amendment and then bringing the text amendment before the public.
Right, with, with the right hand and the waiver too.
That's what we do, right.
So again, Mr. Attorney, does this have to be made public before we can vote on it?
I believe you should advertise it.
The exact language is what you're...
Whatever, whatever form.
The language and the waiver, and, and the, since that would be part of the ordinance.
That's the language.
Well, most of it is.
Well, that's, that's what they, they...
But we have to take out the...
This is what the plan is running for.
I asked you.
Okay.
Is that four?
That's what he goes to. That's a request, temporary waiver.
That is a procedural document, and they passed it. If they pass the language, the language would go in the ordinance, and then they just use their procedural document to get the job done when, when this happens. Is that not? I, I don't know that I've ever seen.
The plan is running for, then maybe the authority that might vary on this. This will be an ordinance modification, and...
And we have an advertisement.
Right. Do we, do we have to advertise it for us to make the change?
I would make the changes in light of challenges that have been overlooked. That's the action I want to do.
That's right, that's right.
We can go... You have an issue, we'll address, and I'll do it.
Right. Yes, sir.
Yep.
No, I will make the motion that we use the verbiage in this to allow the temporary waiver so the family would be able to move forward with the process.
Just the land board said eleven point two-two point four, part of our county ordinance identifying that, but you want to take out the, the impossible exhumation part?
Yes.
And again, the question is, if that is not being advertised specifically, can it be voted on?
I think they just decided that would be...
He just... He's going to put his errors in the region and so on.
But this, this is what your board passed. There's nothing, what's on the yellow on the screen?
Yeah, I, yeah, but have a question. Again, my mind is, which should go in the ordinance? And if what we pass should be strictly a document that's in the file to be handed out? Or which should be?
It's an ordinance, this is an ordinance modification.
But...
But this needs to go in the ordinance?
But I think Miss Lee is, I think what Miss Lee suggests is...
What's in the ordinance?
But this is not, part of this is actually a change in policy, because we don't have any policy now that allows for a temporary waiver.
And, and that's what this language was to do. And so it points to the form that they would use.
So they go again, this is the verbiage, and that's the form that the office actually used.
But this also has to be in the ordinance?
Yes, but no other forms are in the ordinance.
Well, actually, there are other forms in the ordinances for a number of things.
Yes, and that with waiver.
Yeah, and you can feel there's partial minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, all kinds of different forms are in there. And they are numbered as part of the ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion.
In the sec.
We have a sec, okay. Now we'll finish our discussion, I want to get that cleared. All in favor? In your votes. Settle that.
All right. And Mr. Queen is going to read, we have one ordinance.
This is part of it. This will be a public, uh, special use permanent quasi judicial hearing, Sherry Knight, is the applicant? Is she here?
Yeah. Just telling me the number of...
All right, since this will be a quasi judicial hearing, you'll need to come back up, state your name and address, but you'll need to be sworn in. So anyone that's going to testify in this needs to be, has to be sworn in, so... Garth, do you have that? Uh, Brooke, yeah, you'll need, if you're going to be the one speaking, you'll need to testify to. Of course, well, be sworn in, this June, if he's going to, anybody going to speak on this, go and be sworn in. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you showed against the board in its actions shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So here we have the Knight family, who is requesting to have a family cemetery on their property. Property is located at twenty-five hundred Skipper Road in Laurhill. Um, they have already had their service, but, um, we, Richard Bowles has waited until this process before they go any further for a family to, like, inherit.
So they hasn't laid him to rest?
They have, they have.
No, no.
They've been by his home, like, over a month now.
Oh, boy. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's interesting.
Um, my only question, remember I just read it. So the twenty-five hundred Skipper Road in Laurhill, is that, there are residents there now? It's not marked on this.
That is the residence, I think it's a twenty-nine acre plot.
It's, all of us live on, so I live at twenty-five twenty, which is back behind that. My name's on all twenty-nine acres.
Okay. There, there was a clause in this thing that I just ran across, and it said something about backyard burial.
So it's not on backyard?
I know, I'm just trying to make sure the legal part.
Okay.
Um, yeah, backyard burial is not permitted, shall be in law for burial of anybody outside of a registered cemetery. I guess, how do we define?
Um, before the ordinance was changed in twenty-two, a backyard burial could actually be like, you didn't have to have anything done, you didn't need the, um, funeral director at all. As long as you're twenty feet from home, nobody lies.
Talking about like literal backyard, okay?
Yeah, that was not a thorough background.
Got you.
But in this, it's, they already had like a preliminary survey done, and it's going to be at the front of their property. But not because of the backyard burial.
I got you, no, but it fits all the parameters.
Mr. Queen does this application, meet all the standards of the ordinance.
Same there.
And they're finding the Zonin Board recommend that this be approved.
We do.
Uh, when you, do you, do you want to say anything else?
No.
Does anybody else here want to speak in for or against this? Are you seeing, no, I'm going to close the public hearing, quasi judicial hearing, without a, without a discussion?
Um, this chair, I get the motion, allow this to... So forward, I'm ready, I'm into mine.
Second opinion. And just to clear that, that'll be a special use permit issued to Sherry Knight, correct? Okay. Uh, motion in the second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In your votes. Please lay in the rests.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
This is the best thing.
Okay.
I appreciate you remembering that we're probably always glad to get all this taken care of.
Yeah. But it's one of those things you never think will happen, but it's happened enough now in the last twenty-four months that, you know, we can see the problem there, so... Okay, uh, we're going to move on to the next side, which is our comprehensive land use plan. Randy from the, what was the topic?
Randy Dagenhart.
Yep.
I would like to say that this county should be grateful to the state about the work that she has done. Uh, we've had the opportunity to work with folks from the, uh, Lum River Council of Government in the past. Uh, they have done our ordnance for us. And this is something that's been, been needed ever since we passed our ordinances, actually, from a requirement from the state legislature that we have a comprehensive land use plan, or at least a land use plan. Um, Ms. Dagenhart is coordinated with the planning and zoning board. She has coordinated surveys with the public. She has addressed a number of organizations through this. And the work that she has done, in my opinion, is phenomenal. And we are so grateful to have this, to offer in front of you. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Dagenhart, a question for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Randy Dagenhart, Regional Planner at Lum River Council of Government. I'm going to present, to present to you all just a brief overview of the comprehensive plan. And give you a little bit of context on the process. Um, and the ultimate goal is to have you all adopt this plan in correspondence with the recommendation of the planning and zoning board. So the Scotland County Planning and Zoning Board has worked diligently in partnership with my organization to develop a comprehensive plan that you've been presenting. In the most recent meeting, the planning board voted to recommend the plan to the Board of Commissioners for adoption. This document includes all of the required components by North Carolina General Statute 162B. These components include public engagement, demographic data, land use mapping, and future planning. Additionally, the plan includes a number of goals and action steps which will help guide critical decisions regarding land use and the solicitation and allocation of grant funding. This is a living document, and it's recommended by the U of I UNC School of Government that counties regularly refer to and update this document. The adoption of this document will ensure Scotland County's compliance with the General Statute and will ensure that the county can become aware of and carry out actionable goals. Are there any questions regarding the content of the plan or the process? I wish it was created.
I had a couple of questions. Maybe this is just... Page eight. There is a, it's a SWAT analysis.
Yes.
Not sure I know what that acronym is, but, um, it says under strings that stats public transportation not being utilized. And if that's the case, and I'm not saying it is, that would be a string, I don't...
Thank you for noting that, I'll be sure to make that provision.
Um, we have an actual...
Can we send you a few provisions? I'm happy to make any provision. Mine or grand...
Yeah, there's been one on page nine, I think we were trying to say Sepaco, but they said second. Um, and a decision talking about the quarter, uh, of penny increase in sales tax could bring in the county billions of dollars, it says on the...
Okay, yes, I'm happy.
We're not going to take the billions, but I don't think it's going to do that.
Okay, I'm happy to make any provision.
That pays, no. Then I have another question, shows up a couple of times, one on page twenty-nine, one on thirty-six. Um... I'm just curious as to why Deercroft is segregated out from the rest of the communities. There's a Scotland County, then there's a Laurhill, a Wager, and Gibson, East Laurhill, and Maxton. And then Deercroft is pulled out to the side, or is not pulled out, it's listed as a separate category.
Could you tell me what section you're in, like?
This is demographics, this is employment demographics.
Page twenty-nine.
Page twenty-nine, and then I think it does it again on page thirty-six.
We have actual paperwork that we can handle that might be easier.
Good one.
Yeah, my page numbers are a little bit different than yours, thank you.
It doesn't have, yeah, that's what, that's what we get at, is, is Deercroft is listed in there as a, I guess, municipal, and, and Laurahill's not listed in there, I mean, I, I'm just curious as to why Deercroft is segregated out from anything else, instead of being part of Wager, which is, right?
No.
I don't know, I just thought you said Deercroft.
No, I mean, it's not, you mean, it's not incorporated.
But it's Wager, I mean, the address.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I, I just, you know, write off for me.
And did you read up, it, it, it even reads on the education on page 36.
That's page 36.
So, for example, house control, equivalency, the same to a similar municipality other than Deercroft, is that Deercroft isn't a municipality?
Yeah, is it, they're not a municipality. I, I was, I just saw it's the one, one...
So, excuse me, so when I pulled the census data, I believe that the census actually separated Deercroft from the other municipalities, but that's something I'd be happy to look into and revise.
I've never heard that before. It's also listed separately on page three.
Yeah, and if you want to just...
That is probably more than one place.
Create a running list for me, again, I'm happy to make these provisions.
Those, it's probably more than just that, but that's, that was my point, so, uh, when I read it, and, um, I, I guess...
I will say some of the items that are maybe a little questionable, maybe because of commentary for the Planning and Zoning Board, and since Ms. Dagenhart is not a resident of the county, is not here, uh, there may be a miscommunication from us, and we just didn't catch it correctly.
And it may be, as she said, that it's just a census thing, but I, I would think that Laurahill would fall in that too, even though they're not a municipality, Deercroft isn't a municipality, but I would think...
You had this Laurahill listed, but they're not a municipality.
And they're not a municipality, more.
Am I, I'm, I'm going to look into that, sorry, I'll follow up if you get email, but I think it also, um, considers a population of the different areas, and it might also consider the census tracts as well.
Yeah, East Laurahill is no longer a municipality, and this is only the term, too, it's that I've been before, they're doing this, yeah. And it does say it's based on USA, so...
Mr. Chairman, I've got a different question, I think.
Okay, I'm done with my questions.
Um, and, Ms. Kristen Mill, and I, I, when we had conversations about, um, solar farms, there was conversation about them not being on the highways, the, the more populous routes, in and outs, in and out of Laurahill, um, the sizes of them, is any of that addressed in here at all?
I'm not specifically, uh, saying no solar farms adjacent to major highways, but throughout, there are comments that, uh, that state preserve the rural heritage of the county, and commentary such as that in several locations. Now, if the commissioners prefer to have limitations added...
I thought we talked about Blomman. I thought we talked about Heather Buffett, who ended...
So, I will say, the, the comprehensive land use plan is not the place in which, according to U N C School of Government, and the General Statute's, um, description for a comprehensive land use plan, this is not the place in which you would put policy or zoning regulations, that language is specifically reserved for zoning ordinance. This is more of a community document, um, that includes a survey from the public, it includes demographic data, it includes an overview of stress, businesses, opportunities, and threats, it also includes goals and action steps for the county. So this is not the place, based on my understanding, where that would be the good...
And I am not advocating for those limitations, but it was, I know that during that time, we were having conversations, and, and I, I'm not gonna have the right term, but we talked about a land use plan, and then we talked about contracting to get a, and there was a term used, a more specific land use plan that my, Jim used to help here.
Could I add one thing to what Kristen Mill said? In, in what we had before, language wise, there was actually a specific set provision in the prior document that said we would promote the location of solar farms here.
Yes.
That language is not in here, in fact, it, it was taken out completely, so, and that sort of falls in on what Ms. Dagenhart was saying, that...
I, I don't remember the specific frames.
There was a, you, you would get a land use plan somewhere where you could pay a little money, and somebody come in and do a comprehensive land use plan.
Well, then this is comprehensive land use.
And I, I think there was just some confusion when we started this work. I actually picked up this project from a former colleague of mine, I did a lot of revisions to the original document, so I think that the usual comment, that a solar farm was being done at the same time as the comprehensive land use plan work, um, I confirm that the solar farm language regarding whether, where we want it in the county, or anything like that as far as buffering, would not be put in this document. This document is specifically reserved for future land use plan thoughts, and also current demographic trends and current data about, um, Scotland County.
Do you not include something that says preserve the aesthetics of major thoroughfares?
And we have, so...
I think there may be more. Whatever, what he gives him.
I'll, I'll, I do, but...
Uh, yeah, what this document really is, it is a guidance for our future development. It is not a directive, but it gives us a document to refer to, uh, when a proposal comes before us, we can look at it and say, does this fit the desires of the county commissioners and the residents of the county in this particular development? And if according to the land use plan and commissioners, it does not meet those recommendations, then this document gives you the guidance on, to say no, and so do the ordinances. Um, if somebody comes in, they present another solar farm of a thousand acres adjacent to, say, US 74, uh, Illinois Crossroads, that's a major road. The language in here gives us guidance in which we are wishing to promote the preservation of the rural heritage of the county. We can go to you and say, does this do that? It does not, and at that point, we say, well, is it a good idea to authorize this, uh, solar application? You could say yes or no, but this does ask that we do preserve that rural heritage of this county. Strictly a guidance.
Strictly a guidance, but how is that different than the situation we were in six months or a year ago, with the same question?
Uh, again, it's the same situation.
That, that, that's my point, I, I think, when we talked about the comprehensive land use, I, I won't, I, I am not advocating that we have those restrictions in, that's not what I'm saying, but it was my fault ones, by having a comprehensive land use plan, if, if there were specific things that we wanted to have, that that's where they would be. If we're going to leave it to the discretion of the board of county commissioners, which I am 100% in favor of, I'm good with it. I just wanna make sure that what I thought was we were talking about six, 10 months ago, whatever it was, and, and it, but it's not in here.
A strictly a plan for the future, a directive, a plan for the future.
A controlling document, Tom, you're talking about containing the language promote the location of solar farms, which has been taken out, not that that addresses every concern you have, but at least you don't have it listed as a goal in your plan if you adopt this plan.
But it's still, it's still, perfectly so, I think, at least after the discretion of this board.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I would really prefer to see something in the ordinances that limited solar to unusable properties, such as scrubbed out land in the sand hills, that's actually impossible.
I don't know, I don't understand why that, because...
Yeah, I...
I'm, I'm good with what you got, I just, I wanna make, if that was, if that was, in my mind, I need that if I like.
And, and just to add some additional context, the reason that the zoning ordinance was updated prior to the completion of this document is because this document is kind of based on what's in this zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance is the law, it's the policy, this is just kind of the guiding principles, um, what you all in zoning, planning, zoning board can use to shape decisions over time. And again, this is a living document, so the, the items that you have here in front of you today are actually recommended by the school of government to be updated over time, so if at some point in the future, the zoning ordinance does address solar farms, at that point, you all would be in a position to add that to the goals, or add that somewhere in this document. I'm gonna refer to page 66, goal number, let's go back to our lights, uh, I think it's bullet three, protect the current agricultural and rural land uses in a county to avoid sprawl. That's one reference of protecting the agricultural part of the county, um, and then there are a few others that are generally referenced, and they're about the rural nature of the county, and I believe that also references a strength that really on the document as well.
How would you define sprawl?
Um, well, sprawl can be like a mixed use development, it can be housing, um, typically, though, I think in a county like Scotland County, where there's so much agricultural land available, I would think of sprawl more in an, in an industrial context, like a large industry wanting to come in and locate here, um, but it really comes down to the county zoning ordinance, and what the zoning ordinance allows in the different districts.
Um, we're pretty confident in our planning zone board making good decisions in what they're writing.
This, this is not the law, this is not what the decisions will be made based on.
Yeah.
Um, this is really just required by the North Carolina General Statute, according to 162B, um, and it's something that allows the county to have an understanding of what the community members throughout the county feel or believe about their area, um, and it also gives you all some general goals and action steps to just begin thinking about the future. So, and I'm happy to review those with you as well. It also includes, um, some maps in the back, and it also includes guidance on using and updating the plan, as far as, um, what is required procedurally to update it.
Uh, and, and then, I don't wanna take up the time to get with this survey, but if you haven't read it and seen some of the responses, I would give you...
I, I see this as a, a helpful tool for commissioners coming on board with that extent and need guidance, this is not a law, this is a comprehensive plan.
This is a...
That's what they do, are way on board, see here, and make a decision, but as far as something that you can mark. Don't, don't, I'm finished. That's, that's, that's it now.
But it starts on page 10, just in case you want a little better, and read some of those lines.
Really quickly, I will, I will reference goal number one, because I think that was a really substantial goal for the Planning and Zoning Board, um, and also some of, some of the general staff and administration, administration that I spoke to throughout the county. Um, and goal number one, the overarching theme is to enhance county administration and staff efficacy, and the first action step, obviously, is to facilitate, facilitate training for the planning board through the U N C School of Government, um, develop bylaws for the planning board, and ensure that new members are informed on procedures, perform annual reviews and regular updates for comprehensive plan. So really, this document gives the planning board kind of, uh, a guiding, you know, document to be able to refer back to, so when new members join, they're able to say, okay, one of our action steps is to train new planning board members, or provide them with certain information. Um, and then another big one is also just with turnover and new staff and employees, we wanna make sure that there is some sort of information that's being passed along to them. I, I've worked with municipalities throughout Harfied County region, and a lot of the times you see where, um, in utilities, a lot of this information is being stored in someone's mind, and then when there's this new staff person who comes along, they're not given that information, so they don't know what important things are at, uh, so that's one of the goals and structures in here as well, which is the succession plan for positions in administration, findings, and public works. And again, I'm very happy to make any, like, small revision, if they all know this, so...
I'm looking for that goal you just mentioned.
Oh, it's page 64, number one.
Oh, it's under, no, 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 the one that you were talking about. Okay, I see it, I see, it's a bull, I need that, okay. All right, any other questions? Now, do we, do we feel good enough about approving this, or do you wanna wait until...
It's possible that you could vote to adopt with the stipulation that those permissions are made, and I'm happy to receive the permission and turn those around. I would love to see where this provisions are.
That's fine, and then, and then you should take it up there, it's not, you should just take it until next month, but you don't need me to come back for that.
Okay, right, because I, I think there are very little things...
And I would like to mention that Ms. Dagenhart will not be with Lum River Council of Government. Let me jump out, are you done?
I'm, I'm, two weeks ago.
So she is coming back on her own time to do this one, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to finish up the project, and also extend my gratitude to the Planning and Zoning Board, I've learned a lot throughout this process, um, and I, I really had a wonderful time engaging with the different municipalities, um, and engaging with the community, I went around and put flyers up all over Scotland County, piggybackally everywhere, so it was a lot of fun to get to meet people and encourage them to take the survey, um, and you all have a good starting document that you can build off of, and that is the goal, is that this is, you know, referred back to and edited over time. It's not meant to just have this and then put it, put it in your office and a bottom drawer and just leave it there for years, um, this is meant to be, uh, updated, so...
And you'll get with her on the...
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Right, uh, on to the next, number 11, Parks and Recreation, please.
Okay, please schedule, um, I will make this pretty short, at your last meeting, I discussed the fee schedule, uh, as there was nothing in your fee schedule that allowed us to do seasonal rentals for our, uh, fields, and we were doing seasonal rentals, so George Lee, Mr. Johnson, were coming back with, uh, language for that, and so this is the language I proposed to add to the bottom of the fee schedule, that will allow Parks Recreation Director to, uh, review those requests for seasonal rentals, uh, set those at a rate of $500 per season, uh, also gives, uh, if people have rented a field for like an individual game or event, and it's raining out, then they don't have to pay, but I do think if they've gone ahead and rented for the entire season, and one game, uh, rained out, would not be refundable, because they may be getting nine games, uh, at that reduced rate, so this is the language I proposed at the fee schedule.
And basically, this is all gonna be left up to Parks and Recreation Director.
Right, and he can...
He can. No one's good. So can you get a question?
Yes, sir.
All for motion, please.
Second. Okay, the motion in the second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In your post. All right, now, board committee reports.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have three committees, uh, and boards that need informed minutes, uh, and I'm gonna do this as a new motion if I can. The first is Scotland County Parks Recreation, real note, individuals are seeking reappointment, Billy Norris Jr., Tatiana Gibson, and June Pope. The second is Historical Properties, there's one vacancy, we have Ms. Gina Maylie. The third is Planning and Zoning Board, which also has one vacancy, Devon Goodwin. That's our motion.
It is, it's, it's, it's good when they only have to put that position.
There are three advocates, um, for that motion.
I didn't, Mr. Property Center, okay, I'm on the board, so, but, and such, no.
Here's a Mr. Creed's seat, for a lounge chair, Mr. Sam Creed.
And Mr. Creed was relegated back to an alternate board member.
So she would be taking his place, would he?
No, we took one of the alternates and put it in his place, I think.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
If we find, if we find out, we can just make it an alternate seat instead of a...
That's our motion.
Second. A motion and a second, any other discussion?
Is there, is there a current member of planning and zoning who has applied?
A current member of our board?
No.
This is to feel, if I'm correct in the size, an vacancy by a member who just recently resigned.
That's true, yes.
That's...
I'm good.
All right, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, county manager reports, oh, no, 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 wait, board committees, that thing that came out of our TAC committee, I thought we needed to be reappointed and then the county appointees. And then she had the meeting here, and with the municipalities, it was myself, Mary Jo, and then a representative from Gibson and a representative from Waverham, but I don't know who they were. Transportation Department.
Mr. Chairman, I think I have the alternate, but I probably need to replace me.
Okay. You are the alternate, but I know she had the meeting here.
What would get the members out of that?
And the neighbor of the board again, sir?
Transportation Department committee with the Lumber River College. I'm the chairman of that board, but I don't think she has to have that.
I think, I think that, because it expired...
It expired last July.
Well, this one, it said it will expire yesterday, Scotland County Municipalities admitted to nominate the TAC member and alternate. Lumber River Chair Councilperson, Mary Jo Adams, was nominated as a member, and Waverham Councilperson, Agent Wales, was nominated. So those are the two of those municipalities. Please have Scotland County Commissioners appoint those to, and also the county alternates. Tim Ivey is currently our member, and Commissioner Whit Gibson is the alternate. They are both eligible for reappointment, and these terms will last until June of twenty-twenty seas. There's also one vacancy, and currently members are on the TCC board, and current members are Lumber River City Manager Charles Nichols, EMS Manager Robert Sampson, and Economic Developer Mark Ward. Please have the Commission appoint one person to fill the TCC member deficit. So we have to reappoint you and an alternate.
And I, and I...
I just, Mary Jo, and one person to TCC.
Of those ones you just did, or...
There are only, there's another vacancy.
What the TCC is?
Transportation Coordinator.
Oh, the coordinator, that's, that's, but we can do it for everything but the TCC because we don't have anybody to go, unless you get somebody in that meeting.
We could easily do that one.
Everything but the TCC.
Okay, is anyone willing to be the alternate?
It is, we, we just leave with there until we can redo that. Unless you, unless somebody else wants to...
You distracted me, I just got distracted.
Unless somebody else wants to, I mean, you don't have to go, it's an alternate position.
All right, so I am going to make a motion that we appoint Councilmember Mary Jo Adams, Councilperson Agent Wales, Commissioner Tim Ivey, and then alternate Commissioner Whit Gibson to all server on the TAC, that's Transportation Advisory Committee.
I would, I would be glad to relinquish my appointment to someone else who's willing to do it, but I, everyone else wants to do what I was saying on.
Well, why don't we cross that, why don't we cross that for the afternoon?
Right, so that is my motion.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any, any other discussion?
You won't be offended if I vote against that motion.
No, but, anyway, all in favor? Any opposed?
Hey, we do, I'm telling you, but...
The chairman of the TAC committee, if you can do this, you know who he is. Anyway, all right, now moving on to county manager.
Okay, good evening. Really, we have just a few updates tonight. The Maxon Airport land swap, I got an email from Seth Hatchell that I would expect this to be done by the end of the month. All they're working on right now is the deed release, so once we get that, we will sign that, and the land swap will be done in one month. Maybe a year and a half. Maybe. North Term High Waterline, this is just informational, as of October first, forty-eight payments have been received, about thirty-six of those are within your scope of work. Again, we put a deadline for payment of October thirty-first for interest payments. What you should also know is that our engineering department submitted an updated cost of the project, and it has increased by a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Before you move on from that, we're going to have to make the decision next month on this, because that money is coming from that ARCA, and we're going to have to reallocate it before December, so, or by December.
Yes, you're really, at your next meeting, need to decide if you're going to move forward with your project and permanently designate that, I think, seven hundred thousand dollars in ARCA funds to that project, or if you're not, not before, and you can pull those ARCA funds back out of that project, but after December, you can't pull them out.
What is the projected cost of that entire project?
So initially, it was two point seven million, so increase that by one hundred and forty thousand now.
Two point seven, and ARCA, the ARCA money's going to be seven hundred thousand.
Approximately.
And we're going to use the rest out of the water.
Right. So that's just all important information I believe you needed leading up to a given meeting.
That is just thirty-six feet for a three million dollar water line, just a...
Do we want to wait and make the decision that we have a new board? This board has made promises. Do we want to wait till next month?
I don't think, I think we'll be pushing it, we don't. I'm, I'm telling you, wait till next, well, next month, still, you're talking about wait to December. December, wait until the board... No, we got to have it in August.
You can wait to December, your final destination date for ARCA is December thirty-first, and that bed house would probably be carrying on the same.
Well, here's what we, this board has already said, we will go ahead with the project, and for, as the money that we have, I didn't, will go. Because we had already, this board has already said, we may not be able to go as far as we want to go up Turnpike Road.
Well, we have the money for what we want to discuss was, between the water fund and the, and the ARCA money.
We have a two board...
And we still have the ARCA, we still have the water fund, we just have to make a decision, but we got to do a decision because of that ARCA money.
Yeah, okay.
Your East Lumber Properties, at the last meeting, I was charged with going back and asking if that original offer of sixty-five thousand dollars for those three parcels still stood, so I've been in contact with the Realtor, and he is reaching out to that person who made that offer. Scotland Art and Services, I'm excited to report that we don't have any staff working on Lumber River computers anymore. Our, our, our new equipment is, is live, or our original equipment has wiped and reloaded, we are working on our own networks, our own servers. We still have a little bit of work to do as far as security and setting up like multi-factor authentication, things like that for signing in, but largely, we are very close to what we call closing out network review. That doesn't mean there's not ongoing IT work, there'll always be IT work, right? And so, we, we will always have IT work to do in ongoing projects, so that is all. At some point, you have to say your network review is done, and now you're just doing the typical IT routine things in the projects without. East Lumber Recycling Center, still, I'm not going to say sitting on that, still talking to the Realtor about the property. Next step, of course, is to get that survey and the split. Salary study, this is just an update, we continue to look at the recommendations from that, the twenty-two and twenty-three salary studies that were done, to see which one of those we can and should implement, and which one of those, maybe cost-wise, we can't implement, et cetera. So just wanted you to know that. We've already implemented recommendations for SCATS and substance restructuring, and for Sheriff's Office hires, those recommendations are implemented, of course, we're working on the personnel consolidation right now. New business, Hammond Park, this is something I need your opinion on, or your decision on. Hammond Park, we're in a lease agreement with a C L R firm that was set up many years ago. That lease agreement can expire each November. So just to give you an idea, of course, Hammond Park is in the city, you know where that's at. Last year, we spent about seventeen thousand dollars maintaining Hammond Park, and that's between our maintenance, what it costs to up, upgrade it, what it costs in damages, what it costs in tree removal, and so that, that's just a, a general overview of what it costs us in about a year to maintain Hammond Park. So my question to you is, do you want to renegotiate that lease agreement? Or do you want to end that lease agreement? Or do you want to remain as we are?
I'm...
We just are mainly the city's park.
We asked the city to help participate, we had to have a tree removed, and they have a tree removal crew that works at the city now there.
The property belongs to the city.
Property belongs...
They moved the tree, right?
No, we, we had to go pay them the treatment.
We had a problem with that. Somebody was in the tree.
Years ago.
Well, there's a lot of big trees around.
A lot of big trees still there. And what about the leasehold on Market Park?
Market Park, I will have to look that way, so. This one was coming up. If, if we want to modify anything, we have to provide them a way out of our, like, October fifteenth, so I knew this was time-sensitive, giving them notice.
And we don't have any organized events, you know, somebody can rent the shelter, or they have that workout equipment in the track, which is the most popular, but we don't have any organized, anything that we do there.
The improvements to that property with the restrooms and the professional group, who pay for that?
We pay for that. And we continue to pay for the damages to that. Unfortunately, maintaining parks is a frustrating business.
I think they found somebody's living in one of the bathrooms during the weekend.
So they built a new shelter.
Is that right, Mike? Somebody was living in the bathroom.
The toilets are constantly plugged up. Two weeks ago, they spray painted the side of the building, so it gets constant maintenance out here. Is that fair to say, Mike?
Very much so. So the question is, is do we want to continue to lease the park from the city or not? And if not, the city will have to take it back over and do whatever they can do, which I assume is still operating. My very short discussion with the mayor about that, he was kind of excited about it.
About us leaving it happen. Sounds like it, I hadn't been... Yeah. It did, my, my ear, it would work. Can I tell you that conversation with the mayor, the mayor was not focused, he seemed...
A little excited about taking the park back.
I can figure how this started. Many years ago, I shared with the, some information with the city councilman, for Riley, that stated that the county made, the county shall provide recreation, the city made, and they made a decision that they would pull out because the city was taking care of that. And so, we did fund anything, so that's how the county stepped in a hundred percent. But we know that, that normal people that live in the city of Lumber, they're not half of the county population, and the city is not providing any recreation for them, and that's their business, but it's our business also to manage and have failed money. So our members believe that was fair and fair, we should participate in some way because we provide it all.
So is that your motion, not having leases?
Yeah, no, we do the lease, because I'm sure they would reconsider, now that was old school when this went into operation, into effect.
Like, have a hand, but, go. You got a question?
I would hate to see the park not operate.
No, I think they'll operate. I think they may do more things.
Well, maybe, and, and regulations may change, and the land can freely...
I think, but, I mean...
The view of the park.
Yeah.
Both options are good. But I'm just saying, I know the city wants to participate, this decision was made many years ago, not to participate.
I, I, for some reason, I think they would like to have that, or whatever.
For good luck. And that's why, of course, releasing it in their life, but we've invested a lot to release it.
I don't think they're just going to say that we want it, I mean, I don't think they're just going to walk away from it.
They'll provide what we would provide.
I'm saying, is, is that park really a great burden on...
As far as seventy now?
No, it's not a great burden.
But it's just a principle of it, the city is not participating because we're just doing it all. They want to lose this thing.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fine.
We have, the county has created an employee appreciation committee, and Ms. Tyson is leading that committee, and they are beginning to be, and so they are thinking about what to do over the holidays, kind of like what you did last year, and the committee has requested for, to have a holiday luncheon, luncheon on December fourth, and to allow county staff to attend between eleventh and three. And that would allow county staff to come together, socialize, we, we all prepare openly service staff and field, and they can all be together at one time to do that.
December fourth?
December fourth. So that's what the committee's requesting.
The one that can operate is, you're talking about three hours, four hours in the middle of the day, then county offices will be...
Yes, sir. I think the trade-off to that is, now you have departments doing that at random, and instead of doing that at random throughout the month, they would, we would tell departments, this is going to be your day appreciation. So you can't close additionally another time during the month, we're, we're going to do this as a camp.
It's going to be a one time.
That, to me, that's a long period of time. And if you're going to close it from eleven to three, why can't they not? And they won't, won't all be able to go together, but it seems like out of them, you go for the first two hours, and the other half, the other two hours, you don't close the office.
We can, and that's what we've been doing, and I think that, that puts them in a place where, like you said, they have to juggle their lunches, and most don't come and stay, but we do that, they come into the plate building. And Ms. Tyson, like I said, she said it's community, I haven't been in community discussions, but she may give us a little better idea of the thought process behind that, too.
We conducted a survey, and the, those that, we'd responded, at least eighty-six of them responded, wanted to have something like this, so that everybody could come, so they could socialize, they could have games, they could have camaraderie of employees, maybe have a period of time when they're recognized, maybe a warrant, you know, certificates. The county manager, the... manager, the, um, commissioners actually serving them, taking time to be with them and enjoying each other.
What, what did we do last year? What did I reject? I, I, I was, I was there, but what, did we, did we close county offices for the county?
And then, then we had, the Commissioner Gibson had a special group come and serve food, you know, because it's four hours, you say, let's have some food.
Where are you talking about?
Well, we've already talked with Lumberd Presbyterian Church, uh, they've agreed to let us use the facility, it cost us one hundred dollars, we have to send the money to its project.
Uh, I know we had it way from the first year, I heard it I U J last year. I just wondered, maybe we shouldn't stick with the, and do maybe Lower View, I don't know that.
We need to find out if the gym floors were allowed once to set up tables and all that, um, like, we can't go into I J O S and use that gym floor and put a bunch of chairs and everything.
No, but you got those front rooms.
At Lower View?
I mean.
We do have that front room section, um, where they can, they can.
I mean, no, I mean.
Well, we've managed to just figure it out. Figure out location that works. I just, whatever you.
Well, well, and I can't close county offices, right? Um, as I'm just bringing forth what they were requesting, we could cut it back to a shorter frame of time, uh, finding the location, things like that is not a problem.
No, I just think.
It's, it's deciding, are we willing to close the county offices?
I think we need to let you just do your job, see what works for staff, I mean, you know, stagger, they have gone now, after.
Okay, so, if, if, okay.
You're gonna take the heat.
What, what is that?
I'll work with that.
Yes, go ahead, have a.
Okay, um.
Do you, don't care that many points again?
I do, I just do that, so, I, I feel like what I'm hearing is that we all want to place in the offices, and so normally what we do is we set the time that we'll be serving in department is to figure out how to stagger their stuff.
Well, I don't know that we don't wanna, we don't wanna close them for four hours.
Yeah, I, I, I would be opposed to closing.
Maybe eleven, one, like, I, I'm doing, looking at.
I'm, 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 I hated it with the clerk's office, we, we didn't, we didn't, we never felt like we should close, we had people showing up, coming from four, thirty, forty, fifty miles, coming to bed on five papers, when you get there, close, we, we, we never felt like we should close.
The only piece of this that I appreciate in closing is that the whole, we could announce that the, the entire county are, are closed these hours versus different departments doing it different days, people showing up and they're not open.
Just, yeah, just.
So, so that's the only advantage I can see to doing that at one time.
Note, note that if you put the size in a week or two, this day from one to three, county offices will be closed.
Otherwise, what you could have is the S S is gonna close for a few hours one day, health department's gonna do it a different day, uh, they're gonna be sporadic, like that.
Think, decide. Not hard.
Will we at least firm that date next?
That's right, you don't have to start tonight, so maybe by next month, I'll bring you back my, my thoughts on office and time and other, okay?
But the date, we'll firm the date.
We, we can't compromise, that's right.
We'll even get a place or whatever, we'll handle that.
Okay, good news, uh, Parks and Recreation, Special Audio Community Center has secured a sixty thousand dollar grant from Scotland Memorial Foundation that we will use to build an outdoor, kinda out exercise area, much like Hammond Park has, and so we're so grateful on to Ms. Jennifer Townsend, who applied for that grant and got that for us, so, we will begin those plans. Uh, more good news, the city of Lumberd and Scotland County are gonna collaborate on five properties throughout the county that are abandoned properties and have existing structures or houses on them, and so the city has agreed to pay for the asbestos removal and actually tearing down the abandoned properties and the county will forego the tipping fees, and so you'll see some, uh, properties cleaned up across the county and then both, will both share in the full closure and proceeds that promote the auction. Um, we are applying for emergency watershed program funding, that is more funding that will clean up, um, clutter ditch, ditches or things like that, that can, it's severe rain causing flooding, so we are applying for more of those funds, the last time we got those was in two thousand and eighteen. And, um, last thing I will say is that we turned our lead water service line inventory that was required for all, um, water systems, check that off. We, we did that, we all, and so, uh, that, that wasn't a super hard task, but something we had to do. And then I will say, because western North Carolina is on everybody's minds and everybody's prayers, Scotland County today has, uh, sent resources there from nine-one-one, from EMS, our local board has been deployed, and so Scotland County, and of course, the sheriff's office will know, is having that drive to cleaning supplies, so, uh, we've sent the resources that we can send, given that we're a small county.
Firemen?
I do believe, uh, by.
You kind of know the time, yes, up there in the city of Lumberd since the fire now.
So, um, we're definitely trying to do our part because we know, we've had hurricanes over, certainly did their part, but, and that, that's not a problem.
Okay. You're up.
Um, I would exactly, we want to pray for the commissioner, um, like, father's mother passed away with, um, other than what, um, this manager stated earlier, pray for those in Nashville, that area, that region, Tennessee, it's, kind of watching the new dollars, it's bad, you know, it's really bad, it's gonna take years before they get back some type of normalcy. We can pray for them, but anything you can donate, every morning, after two, et cetera, could've been us, we've got a lot to be thankful for, that, that pretty much it.
This all?
I don't have it.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, yeah.
I, I was just gonna mention the same thing about the western part of the state and some of the stuff that's been up there, um, our former clerk of the board's mother was in the pool of that, and, um, they finally got to her, I think she's been around this, and, um, she's okay, but it took them a while to get here.
They brought her back, they brought her back here?
Oh, they did bring her? I was wondering if they were gonna get her to leave or not, so, um, but, but I think, you know, they had a little concern for you days.
And Jason's parents were, they were, they, they knew Jason, or his wife knew vision of, of her parents until about early Sunday morning for her parents and late Sunday afternoon for you.
Didn't come out this past, not in the city before, so that's been a low week.
I mean, I mean, you said the parents, mom, when you got, it's still in the service at all?
Thursday, one o'clock, they drove back, dealing with me with one of the, but you can go on his website, so, unfortunately, you can go back out, you know, his website, and it's got all the, all the information.
Okay. With that said, we need to do, like, still need to do a close session? Okay, we need to do a very short close session, it mentioned the agenda under that statute number, thank you all for coming, and I need a motion to go into close session.
No need.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five minutes, y'all heard that?
Thank you all, be faithful people, we're St. Zerian.
I think that, that five, that's five minutes, come here.
Yeah.
My day.
I don't.
Let me tell you something.
You got it, you got it. Good, when did we end?
I think it was. That's what I said.
It was in the package? It was in the package.
Wait, 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 wait.
I don't think it was in, uh, we'll have to, I'm super told being on, y'all guys.
Mrs. Neat, I can't get it.
I got it. You're not saying you got it? I don't remember seeing it.
I get it, too.
Stop, stop, stop streaming. Stop streaming.